Good evening, welcome to the July 20th New Market Town Council Meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I thought we had someone coming in, but I guess not. So, yeah, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to seal the minutes from the non-public held before this meeting.
You have a second.
Second.
Any questions, please call the roll.
Counsel Boden.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Nizarro.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Seven oh four, there's no one in the public, so we will close public comment at seven oh four. Do I have a motion to accept the May thirty-one joint school-town meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll. Oh, wait, wait, Counsel Pike?
Yeah, I just, I'm not sure that there's another place, or maybe we can leave it to the end, but I would, I would point out that in the, in those minutes, it's a good chance to review. We, we did talk quite a bit about, um, uh, timing of the process, and talked about it, trying to hold another joint meeting in mid-August. So, I, I think we probably, perhaps, since this is the last meeting we will have before mid-August, since we're not having a, a meeting the first week of August, we, and the school meet, the school board is meeting tomorrow night, we might want to touch base on potential meeting dates tonight.
Well, would that be, last time, didn't you set that up with Counsel Weinstein? Didn't you work that out with the school and then get a date?
Well, we could, we could try to work that out on the, on the subcommittee, but, you know.
I mean, the cheers were left out of this, so why don't, I would suggest you do that, since that was the protocol for the first time.
Okay.
That's okay.
The intention of myself and the superintendent to reach out to the subcommittee when our stuff is finalized, so we can pick a date. We are meeting again tomorrow, but, I mean, I think with anybody starting a new position, I gotta wanna see, I wanna make sure that the superintendent's able to do it as well.
Well, then if you guys are, are meeting, and you've got sort of an agenda and a focus, because we sort of laid out what we were trying to accomplish with that, right? Why don't you try to pick a few dates with the new superintendent, and then get those dates to the council, instead of you having to have another meeting with, with the school?
That'd be great.
And then we can make a decision.
Yeah, our, our intention first is to meet with that subcommittee, the two, the Counsel Weinstein, Counsel Pike.
Oh, well then if you're gonna do that, then you can, fine. Are you gonna meet with the school subcommittee as well?
Yeah, it would, it would be the four members, the, the four individuals who have been serving as the subcommittee, so.
But as far as the minutes, were there any changes?
No.
No changes?
No? Okay. Call the roll.
Counsel Boden.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Nizarro.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero to one.
Take it away, town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to give an update first on the downtown pedestrian improvement project. Um, it is underway. As you can see downtown, the paint is lined up of where we're gonna be doing the construction. Uh, one of the things we have been discussing is that in order to reduce the length of the project, noise and dust for the residents and businesses in the area, it was determined that we'll be implementing the same one-way traffic pattern that was in place for the downtown reconstruction project between two thousand eight and two thousand ten. This will allow Target to get in, address one side of the street, and then switch over. DOT threw a wrench in at the beginning of the week, and we are going to be going to Concord tomorrow to request permission from their transportation, uh, review committee to do this. We threw, we were under the understanding when we met with DOT the week before, that we were all set to do it. We held a public meeting yesterday to get input. Um, the public was fine, they just, you know, had some questions and some suggestions of signage, um, but they understood the reason why. Uh, I met with the DOT, District Six, who, it seems like they're the ones with the biggest concern. If what it is, it's an individual who wasn't here during the last project, so they're seeing this plan again, and not understanding that the town's already been through this enough, they know the, the route. Um, but he's got some concerns that I met with, and we tried to alleviate them. Uh, we shouldn't have any issues, I think if, it may be a couple tweaks, but we should be all set. Our intention is to start this on the beginning of next week. If that starts, we will be doing a, you know, every news blast that we can possibly do, including reverse nine-one-one to all residents to know that it's gonna be coming. Uh, you know, our biggest concern was, at nighttime, when we're discussing having it open, you know, close from seven to five, and then reopening at night, we'd actually have to cover each of the crossings, and what you cover it with is those big metal sheets, and all night, people who live in the area are just gonna hear the banging, and it just didn't make sense, and it would be a longer project. So, we thought it would be easier to do it this way. Um, other than that, everything else seems to be on target, and I'll keep the council apprised on how, how everything's going. Just a reminder, as you, the council mentioned earlier, that the August third meeting has been canceled, and the next one is gonna be on August seventeenth. Just want to let you know, we're currently in the process of closing out fiscal year sixteen. Attached to this report is a preliminary expense and revenue report for two thousand, June two thousand sixteen. We'll not have final numbers until sometime in August due to bills from previous fiscal years still coming in. That being said, we're on track to come in under budget this time. We've expended ninety-six percent of the general fund budget, which is two hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars under budget. This number will shrink with the completion of the first phase of the Bennett Way sidewalk. Welfare continues to come in under budget, and we did see an overage in legal due to some special cases that we had. Revenues are also coming in higher than anticipated. Motor vehicle registrations are one thousand, one hundred seventy-six thousand eighty-eight dollars higher. Building permits came in six thousand fifty-six dollars higher than budgeted. That was because we were more accurately budgeting what the, we estimate, uh, accurately estimating our final year figures for building permits. And ambulance receipts actually jumped by forty-seven thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars this year, and that goes back into the fund to offset any, um, equipment that we may need to buy from there. So, we will have a rough estimate, hopefully, for the contribution of fund balance at the next meeting. I did wanna let the council know that, um, the cable channel director, the IT director, the building inspector, and I've been meeting to looking to upgrade technology in the council chambers. First, the first thing that we're gonna be doing is we'll be replacing the press-to-talk system that you have in front of you with an updated version. For those who may not know, this is actually a custom-made system that was, is failing, it's not even starting to fail, it's failing. Uh, we have found, um, companies out there that make it specifically for meetings, and we are, uh, in the process of ordering a new system there. In addition, we will be having a new microphone system that will be hopefully permanently mounted on the, on the counters here, so you don't have all the wires everywhere, and have this cleaner. In addition, and we're, um, for up here, we're also gonna be upgrading the look and the woodwork of this, the day, the council dais. We wanna cut back, the, the public can't see, there's a lot of wires running back here, and we wanna make it easier for everybody. Um, all these funds are gonna be coming out of the cable franchise fees that go into the ca, the cable franchise capital reserve fund. For, that's that extra money you pay on the cable bill that comes back to help us do technology here. I apologize. The other thing is, uh, we will be upgrading the cameras in here to HD. While it may not affect Channel thirteen, it will impact, it will improve the picture there, but also the picture online, because the number of people who are actually watching online now is, is much higher. So, um, we are now finalizing those costs, but we will be doing that in the near future. On my, like, the one thing I didn't have on my written report, and I did send out a memo to the council, was that we did receive a proposal to facilitate a goal-setting session from Primex. My recommendation is that the council, if, if, which the council, we can set this up for a session on a, on an off-night to do goal-setting with the council. This would, you know, as a, Primex says, it's to come up with the, an idea what the council's goals are for the next year to the next five years, and from there, you would take that and then take that document and come up with specific goals for the town administrator for the next year, to start implementing it. There is no cost for this facilitation. They do this for free, and I think it's just a, it's a better process, and we don't have to worry about councils having to take the notes and break down everything, they'll do it for us and come back with a final product of what the goals were.
Makes sense.
Um, there's no objection, I, I'll try to schedule that sometime in the coming month. Um, I know everybody has vacation in the beginning of August, so I'll try to do sometime another time, but I think it's a valuable process to go through.
So, in other words, when we're coming up with the goals for this, for this year, theoretically, you wanna have them come in and work in conjunction with us?
Correct. Well, what they're going to do is they're gonna facilitate the, the council's overall goals for the town. What do they wanna, what is, what does the coun, the council wanna achieve in the next year to the next five years? What do you wanna have as the, of the priorities that we're looking at? After those broad goals are taken, then the council itself would go, go aside, as part of my inner view, set up the goals for the next year and say, "Look, our broad goal for the next year is to do X, Y, Z. To accomplish this, town administrator, we want you to do A, B, C as your three goals for the next year."
Right.
So, one's a public process and one's a non-public process, 'cause it's part of my evaluation.
Okay. So, they'll be working with us?
Yep.
That's what I'm asking you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they'll be.
So, while we're coming up with the goals, they're gonna be in the room, interacting with us, discussing it, et cetera?
Yep, they'll be facilitating, taking everybody's information.
So, it'll be an agenda item, essentially?
Actually, it'd probably have, it'd be a special meeting.
Okay.
I'd have it as a special night.
Well, since we've had such short, um, just, as a suggestion, since we've had such short agendas, like tonight's pretty short, um, we could sort of, if we have a meeting like this, we could make it into like a, a, that could, could have been an agenda item, for example, tonight.
Yeah.
Because, so you might wanna just take a look at what's coming down the pike, so we don't have to set up a separate meeting, if we can fit it into a regular.
Yeah, and we, I mean, I could always just, we could truncate the meeting by not having me report as much as we do, I could just turn over and say, "You have my written report if any questions," and if not, we'll start the goal-setting session if this, we'll do it that way. But I'll, I'll see what the schedule of the individual is as well.
Okay.
And that is all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Any questions? Counsel Thompson?
Just like pushing that button. Um, goes into the monthly financials that we got, and, ah, anticipated, we're on track to come in under budget at this time per your report.
Yes.
Um, I noticed when going through the individual report, um, Chief Malaski had said the fire and rescue budget, um, he specifically said, quote, "It's gonna be hard to hold the line." Um, one reason he said is, and, and I did note, sixty-four percent of the calls are EMS. Um, that line item is up. How did the ambulance fees go against an increase? If seventy-four percent of his quote-unquote "budget" is expended for EMS calls, but we do have ambulance run, uh, revenues.
It doesn't go against the budget.
It doesn't go against the budget, yeah, okay.
I mean, it's for government budget, you run over and you have a higher.
Okay.
Revenue in that situation. You can't take a revenue and book it against the expense in that situation.
And I know the police has some of that too, like with their detail fees and, and things like that, but, but I, I think that the chief does take that into consideration sometimes when he's doing other things. Um, that being said, DPW administration is up a hundred, or, up five percent, it's, it's a hundred and five percent expended, excuse me, based on that report, I think I saw someplace. Streetlights, a hundred and twelve percent. Uh, building and grounds, a hundred and three percent. But, overall, the town projection right now is under by one or two percent.
Right.
So, we're on track. So, I, I just kinda want to make the point that I appreciate with the into departments, there are line items and departments that are gonna be over and under, um, you know, there are understandable reasons for that, and I would never go against any department for that, but I wanted to make the point that overall, I think, um, that you as the administrator being in charge of the whole thing have come in just fine, even with the pluses and minuses.
And that's, that's what we monitor all the time, and it's one of the things.
It was a long way to say that. Good job, Steve.
We discuss it all the time with department heads, it's, when I, you know, I, sometimes we crack the whip that, and they say, "Well, we're under budget," I go, "Understand that my job is to look at the overall budget."
Well, Jimmy had to run over because he had a something, something, something.
Yeah, so we have to do it there.
So, hey, Bob, you got a little bit over there, you know, whatever, and I appreciate that cooperation going back, and I, I think that's important. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Counsel Nizarro.
Um, I know we're gonna vote on it later, that's, not today, but at some point, because it comes out of a capital reserve fund, but I'm gonna assume that when you have the presentation for the council chambers' technology upgrades, we'll see the capital improvement plan that goes along with that.
Absolutely.
I'm just gonna say it now.
Yep.
I don't think we need to upgrade. Seems like a waste of money. That's it.
If I had more accurate names, I'd agree with you more.
That's gonna die, that's.
No, no, but you know, basically, this works, other than.
I need a tape, piece of tape with a name.
Yeah, I mean, I could use this, I wouldn't tell me exactly, you know.
Having run this, it's.
Yeah, we, what we should see is the budget for it, so we can deal with it at that. Counsel Weinstein?
Um, I just have a couple of questions. The first was about the intern that's going to be working, um, with the multiple towns, and they're, so they're gonna start at August first, and do they have a specific scope of work, and do they have an end date?
Um, their end date is when the project is finished, which we're anticipating to be late fall.
Okay.
Um, their scope of work, the, three of the four communities are working on now, we already have, we have a broad outline right now, but we wanted to see, one of the things was what the skill of the individuals are as well. So, um, the other three, the three of us are getting together to hammer that out.
Okay, but it's a relatively short-term project.
It is.
Okay.
It is. It's, it's a macro view of what we can do.
Okay. Uh, and then my other question is about water.
Yep.
And in Sean's report, um, he mentioned that the wells are low, I mean, I think we all know that we're in a stage-three, um, emergence or drought conditions, and if things don't improve, we'll be going to stage-four. So, I was hoping that you could maybe talk just a little bit for the community about what that means, stage-four.
Sure. Um, first thing I'll say is that I met with Sean yesterday to discuss where we are. We are still eight to ten feet below where we should be, which is the, the regular level. However, we are, we're staying pretty level. We are not dropping as much as we thought we would be at this point in time without any rain that we've had. We believe conservation efforts are working. Uh, that being said, if we do drop, the stage-four is, there is no outside use of water. It, what we have now is, depending on each day, whether or not you're an even number or an odd number you can use, that will be, that will be off the table. We just cannot have water being used at that point in time. Uh, and we will be out actively fining individuals who do. Uh, right now, we're warning people to, to follow the, the rules of the, you know.
What about car washes and things like that?
Car washes, businesses are not impacted by that. Uh, watering of, watering of lawns, yes, car washes, no.
They also do a lot of recycling of, of the dirty water, of the gray water, is that what they do? They'll pick up a lot of it.
Yeah, not all of it, though, but it would be nice to.
A big chunk, I think, though.
It'd be nice to know what that is, just if we could. I'd be curious, 'cause I know there was some, there is a recycling, I just didn't know what percentage, because it's kinda hard to tell people they can't, obviously, we, we don't wanna stymie a business, but it's kinda hard to say to people, "You can't water your lawn or wash your car, but you can run thirty cars through a car wash." I'm just saying.
Well, I think that the net, what it used to be when, when we were building those things was that the net usage of water on those was still less than you'd use at home even washing your own car, because of the reclamation, whatever, that it, it cut it way, way down.
And the pressure.
So, they can do thirty, I, I'm not saying they can do thirty cars to my one in the driveway, but it is, it is more efficient to do it that way.
The golf courses are also.
Golf courses, they cannot water.
I thought they can't, yeah, so I mean, how do you, I'm just from my own understanding.
If they were on their own well, I suppose, they, you know, they could, that would be the difference.
No, but if they aren't, how do you discern?
If they aren't, they cannot.
How do you discern from one business to the other who can and who can't?
What the regulations read is that, it, the, the law states any outside washing of cars, or watering of plants, or lawns. It does not state car washes.
Which is inside.
Plus, it does state that, you know, watering of greens is considered lawns. So, that's why we had to, we have to do it there.
Okay.
It's, we've worked with them, we, we, trust me, this was the, we went through this last year with them, um, and we're trying everything we can to work with them to either help them go through the process to open wells.
Right.
Uh, or use ponds, because we understand the importance of the, having the greens and the, the fairways in the best possible condition.
But it would be nice to know what the breakdown is, 'cause I, you know, at one point, and I just don't know the history, at one point, I thought they had to recycle all of it, and then I've heard so many different, it would just be nice to know what the story is.
Yep.
The real story. Um, I just had a question off of what Counsel Thompson had asked. So, the ambulance is upside down theoretically because of the calls, and the revenue he brings in doesn't go against his spending, right?
Correct.
Is there a way that you could, and, and I'm assuming, um, our budget is within, is looking good, also because we've got significant dollars that came in that weren't anticipated yet again, from, from, uh, people registering their cars, and there was, you know, there were other revenues that came into the town. So, that also helps the town, you know, budget-wise.
Right.
But, you know, it would be helpful, I think, if, if you were to, and I'm oversimplifying to make a point, if you or Rick could say, or maybe Matt could help him with that, "Okay, so the ambulance was twenty-five thousand dollars over what we had anticipated, um, and it won't show up on my P and L, but we brought in forty-five thousand," 'cause I think it's a moneymaker, and so we, the council could actually see that we were plus twenty or whatever the number is, that would help clarify, you know, some of those things, you know, the, the two areas where they do outside, they get revenues, like the police details and what.
Yep.
So, anyway, that was just a thought, because otherwise, we really have no way of knowing.
Yep.
Um, were there any areas that they were up? You said overtime was, was pretty good, they didn't, the overtime to do the sidewalk was not.
Yeah, we haven't had any, now.
Not much, nothing unanticipated here?
Nope.
Okay. Um, are we ever gonna have that cable franchise agreement?
They're going through the, the.
I've been on that committee for years, and we've never met.
The attorneys are, are sent, yeah, it always happens this way.
Just one.
The attorneys send documents back and forth for like the first two years, between our attorney and Comcast. They're doing, they're doing so much stuff right now, is, "Did you ever put the service on these poles? Are you a hundred?" And they have to go through what the FCC.
I think Phil named me to that committee.
Yeah.
The second year we were on the council.
Yeah.
It's been, it was before.
It was before me.
Yeah, I was just wondering, 'cause it's so.
Yeah, it's, it's a process that's.
Long, tea is born.
Almost as good as a highway committee that I'm on.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, I'm, see, trust me, if, once we get there for the time for the hearings, you'll, you'll go to the hearing and they'll tell you, and there's two things you can't discuss in franchise negotiations: channel lineups and rates. So, what do you have to talk about?
I don't know. I would like on, I would like on-demand as a side, but.
So, yeah, but that's a, just to let you know, yes, it is, but it's in the, right now, the attorneys are going back and forth.
And then just one last thing, it's not on, on your report tonight, but it, maybe for our next meeting, 'cause you have plenty of time.
Yep.
I had had a very brief discussion after the last meeting that the council had regarding the bicycle path, and several counselors were concerned about, you know, spending good money for bad, et cetera, et cetera. And the understanding was, and my question was, is the eight-hundred and nine-thousand dollars really a real number to get to Hershey Lane? And it's kind of a catch-22, because you don't know if it's a real number until they do the engineering, and they can't really figure out what we're gonna have to pay until they do the engineering. So, I had had a, a very brief discussion with Bill Watson, the gentleman who had come in here, and I asked him if there was anything else that that eight-hundred and nine-thousand dollars could apply to, um, for the town, so we didn't have to return the fifty thousand or whatever it is for engineering, because apparently, we have to return the money if we don't do the project. Isn't that sort of the deal? We have to, if we don't go ahead with, with the bicycle path, we have to pay back the engineering to the federal government or?
But we don't have the authority to pay it back. The town said we cannot expend the funds to, so that, that's the test.
Just creates a little quiet mind.
We're, yeah, but I.
Okay, so, but, but the, the reason I brought it up was, um, maybe you can reach out to him and just ask him, is there any other possible use or utilization of any of that money?
Do you already know the answer?
I don't. No, I, no.
I was gonna make sure.
If I did, if I wanted to, if I was looking to set you up.
I guess, I have to ask.
I don't think I've done that.
I just wanted to show up.
No, but I, I don't wanna call him.
No, I'll let you know what's, what's going on. We just received notice from the state late yesterday that they reviewed the, the plans that Underwood submitted. If you remember at the last meeting, they had to do the engine, the environmental engineering, get some more things. We just got that back from the state yesterday, that they reviewed it with some comments. The next meeting, it'll, it's gonna be back on your agenda, asking where do you want us to go? So, we, it's, but I will ask that question.
But the reason I brought it up is, if we, he didn't nail it down because he wasn't sure, so, believe me, there's no setup.
Yeah.
Um, I wish, I wish, you know, I, I knew, but he implied that there may be something else that we could possibly do. I was trying to save.
Is it useful not just spending money to spend money?
No, no, but the point is, I didn't wanna, if we have the money that we can use for something, and not have to throw fifty grand at it for engineering, you know, it would be nice to find out what other alternatives, maybe none of the alternatives are good. I didn't, we didn't drill it down, because I basically said, at that point, if there's an option, you can discuss it with Steve.
Yep.
So, I did ask the question, though, so there you go. And I think that's about it for that. Any committee reports, please? Counsel Pike?
Yes, uh, Planning Board met last week, so, and the, once again, the, uh, Diane's report in the, in the administrative's report is, is really covers it well, so, but the, um, the future land use chapter for the master plan was, was modified and, and approved, so that we do have that future land use chapter. The biggest change was, a lot of what had been under the coastal resource protection zone was, a lot of that language was, um, taken, that, that zone sort of was not kept, but the protection language was applied essentially all throughout the town to our one. So, um, I think there's a sensitivity that we know, you know, one of the things I mentioned last time that I'm on is this saltwater intrusion plan. There's lots of, um, needs for careful planning throughout the town about, you know, protection of our resources, protection of water, and smart development, and, and the watersheds are the watersheds, they're not just what is inside of, or near to the bay. So, that, that language is reflected in the master plan, uh, that's approved, and the That's approved and the process can move forward. Other than that, the, they accepted the application for the, the new Sanderson development that runs between Dame Road and Bay Road. And the other two projects that were on the agenda were continued to the August meeting. And that's the Planning Board.
Any other committee reports? There, there was no committee report, but just along, because the EDC was discussed. My understanding is the EDC report was accepted in a separate section of the master plan and that, it kind of goes to the resolution that we have tonight, so I might as well bring it up now. Since the Planning Board is now going to discuss the recommendations made by the EDC, it was just my thought that maybe we should wait until they weigh in on the, the EDC recommendations and validate them before we vote on this because they have not actually, what should I say? They've not endorsed, they have not said, "We're going to follow through with this." They've said, "Okay, thank you for giving us this information." But I, they haven't acted on it. That was my understanding.
To my knowledge, it wasn't, hasn't been discussed yet by the Planning Board. I mean, I-
Yeah, they're going to be. You're going to be-
We just, we, at the end of the evening, we got the-
It's, it's on the table.
Oh, so you're still tabling?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were applying, you wanted to-
Just for procedurally, that will remain there listed until our counselor makes a motion to take it off the table.
Okay.
So, you'll see it every meeting until-
No, no, for some reason, I thought we were going to act on it, so.
Nope.
Okay, good.
No, but I, but I think it will, you know, the Planning Board will be, they've been tied up with that chapter and couldn't move on to these things next.
Okay. Next on the agenda, do what, is this, do you want me to take the appointment-
Yeah.
-of Christian? And I'd like a little overview if you don't mind, if you don't. Do I have a motion to accept to the Housing Authority Board, Kristen Whittier, for a five-year term?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Steve, can you give us an overview on this?
If I don't mind. The Housing Authority Board is a separate government entity in town that oversees the public housing to Terrace Drive. It's a federally funded program and it's required that the local governing body appoint the members of the Housing Commission, the service Housing Commissioners. That one member of the commission must be a resident of the housing. I mean, there is, and this is, they've had a vacancy for a while and it's, Ms. Whittier is an individual who has expressed interest to the Housing Authority to serve in, in response, they send them up here to be appointed, so.
Do they make any policy or financial?
They make all, actually, they do. They make all financial policies and housing policies for the, the federal housing on Terrace Drive.
Okay. I get it.
It's, they're the, they're the governing board of the public housing.
Do I have a motion to accept? Do we, do we get this?
We already did that.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, do we actually-
I don't think we had a motion to appoint.
She motioned.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I second it.
Well, we both.
Yeah.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
And we only have one resolution tonight on page 76.
It's a first reading.
Yep. Resolution 2016-17-1 relating to the hazardous household waste collection. Where is a town in New Market solicited proposals for hazardous household waste collection and whereas the two companies submitted proposals and whereas MXI Environmental LLC was the low-cost per-unit bidder? Now therefore be it resolved that the New Market Town Council does authorize the town administrator to enter into an agreement with MXI Environmental LLC for hazardous household waste collection. First reading, July 20th.
I wanted, just procedurally, I wondered if you noticed that after that, there's something now called the staff report that is going to be attached to every resolution. It's going to be a uniform form that if a resolution ordinance comes before the council, it's going to look like this. It's going to have the title, who prepared it, my recommendation, the background, the financial impact, discussion, and then the recommendation from the department head. So, you're going to have the recommendation department in mind and then attached to that will be any other pertinent documents. So, you'll have a summary of what's there. I made it clear to every department head in that no resolution will be coming to the council if it doesn't have one.
I like it.
So, just want to let the council know.
Any closing correspondence to the council? Closing comments? I just have one very quickie. I probably should have brought it up earlier under your overview for the town. From our last discussion, we were talking about the tanks, you know, with the fuel and everything. So, it prompted me to ask someone who runs a company how that works and just for sake of, because it's an early meeting and it's not going to take long. If the tanks were above ground, which I'm assuming our tanks were mostly above ground-
Mostly.
The certification is like once every 15 to 20 years, meaning they're, they're pretty stable. So, at the end of the day, because this individual is a huge company that, that I talked to and they said, you know, they, they really do like contracts with their tanks because no one ever changes, just for whatever it's worth. So, the way to really evaluate it, because there was a two and a half cent difference that Kyle brought up last time, and I think it might be worth having Matt in the future take a look at a five-year or some timeline. Because a tank is about 2,800 bucks. I didn't know how many tanks we had, but it would go down exponentially depending upon how many we bought. But over the long haul, if you really want to evaluate it, because certifying it isn't expensive, when you go to change companies, that gets very expensive because they have to, they make you empty the tanks and there's a whole rigamarole. So, that's sort of why nobody ever changes because number one, you're locked in and number two, there's a pretty big fee to get rid of them. So, if, if we really want to go out to bid, because it's almost like, why go out to bid if we're going to always stay with a provider even if we get a better price? Because it's just so difficult if you don't own the product. And that's, so I just thought I'd give you the feedback.
Yeah, I asked the finance director to look into that yesterday.
But the only, the only way you can do a cost benefit, you can't do it on a one or a two-year basis because it's just, it's an exercise and it won't make any sense.
Yep.
But if you really want to know, you know, you own your own tanks, at least then the company that you're doing business with will generally have to keep themselves, that's how, because once they got you, they, very rarely do they change.
Right.
So, anyway, I just thought I'd pass that on. It's not a big deal, but, and that's all I've got. Any, nothing else? Please, for a motion to adjourn? Do I have a motion? I don't think we have anything else, do we? Am I missing something?
No.
Motion to adjourn? We're adjourned. Here we go.